Do you want to do that?
Oh, yeah.
No, I know. I'm concerned about that. So you have right this?
Yes. Just let me tell them, I'm regular.
Okay.
Yeah. So I take the rest and so the rest of St. Holmes. So it's like number one to the South Jersey. Delsey and St. Holmes. High-powered, high-powered. We know the kids don't really mind. Man, it's all off the table. They wish they had those up there. That's why.
Dr. Graves, do we still have those districts? Where do they help that?
That is a great question, but I don't have a answer. But I will find out.
Because I saw, that's a gang, but that's what the region used to be.
It rotates every couple of years.
Rachel, where do districts need help here?
For wrestling? It's, um... Supposed to be, I'm gonna say it won't.
Good evening and welcome. The fourth president of the Delsey Regional High School District for Education. I hereby certify by all provisions of the Oakland Public Meeting Law, P.L. 1975, Chapter 231, Act in effect. Notice of this meeting was mailed to the South Jersey Times, Sentinel, Daily Journal, as well as municipal clerks of Elk and Prattville Township. Mr. DeWitty, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, in the business of the good reason of this law.
Mrs. Beck, could you please stand?
Here we go. Uh, since Miss Beck was out, the first meeting will swear in. I gave you cheat sheet there because it's a little longer. If you raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I state your name.
I, Cheryl Beck.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and this state.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the governments established in the United States and to this state.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
Under the authority of the people, so help me God.
I state your name.
I, Cheryl Beck.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of board member of education.
Do solemnly swear that I possess the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of member of the Board of Education.
Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to state statute, am not disqualified due to a conviction of a crime or offense listed in the state statute.
The last time I did this, I had remembered things, and it's fine.
So I give you a cheat sheet.
Yes, thank you. Am not disqualified as a voter pursuant to state statute and not disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in the state statute. And that I will faithfully and... Let me just continue.
Go ahead. Yes, sir.
And partially and justly perform all of the duties of the office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I state your name.
I, Cheryl Beck.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I have undergone a criminal history background investigation.
Do solemnly swear that I have undergone a criminal history investigation, the purpose of ensuring that I am not disqualified from membership due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in the state statute, and the results are still pending.
Congratulations. You have a bottle with the copy of the documents. Thank you.
Okay, roll call. Mrs. Katochi? Mrs. Beck?
Here.
Mr. Morelli?
Here.
Mr. Langford? Mr. DeWitty?
Here.
Mr. DiMaggio?
Here.
Mrs. Gagio?
Here.
Many of you, you have action. Mr. Scoop?
Here.
Okay. Have a presentation?
We do. Mrs. Dockery?
Good evening. Are you coming out? Come on. My name is Christine Dockery. Thank you for having us here tonight. I am the theater teacher here at Delsey, and I run the drama club, the Spine Honor Society, I'm a Cappies mentor, and... You guys can come this way. Mentor, and I direct the school musical. We're so excited to be here. I brought some of my little theater nuggets, as I call them, to present to you. We really are very excited about this year. I'm sure, as you know, I'm sure Dr. Graves has told you, and some of you were here for Adam's family's quick demise during COVID, and it's taken us some time to recover students, support, and comfort of audience members. And we have done junior shows since the pandemic. This is our first big show back. It is Little Shop of Horrors. We are very excited. And we are also members of Cappies, the Southern New Jersey Cappies. Several of our members here, I think we have seven total, but a few of you are Cappies ment... critics. They go to other shows in our area. They critique, view, and write critiques of their... of the other shows, score them, and then they come to our show. They're coming to our matinee. It's about 80 students. It's all proctored by theater teachers, but we do not vote, and we cannot win. So no one can win for Best Director if I directed. Only 80% student work. So these students get a rewarding experience writing, learning how to be a journalist, and also as students who are excited to be in that environment. At the end of the year, as Dr. Fitzpatrick knows, because he was one of our presenters at the Cappies Gala, which is literally like the Tony Awards. The first year I went, I cried. It was beautiful. Red carpet, big stage. We do it at Eastern High School. Their pictures are up on the screen if they're nominated. There were multiple scholarships. I think we had three students from our school get scholarships from film academies. They win awards. It's really quite amazing. I would love to invite you all to attend that. And then a little celebration afterward. So anyway, that's the Cappies. So everything we do now is, can we get a Cappy for that? Can we get a Cappy? Will it be good enough for a Cappy? So it's kind of a motivator also. They have helped from props, costumes, designing, helping choreograph. They're very involved. The fix-it classes have gotten involved, the art classes have gotten involved. It really is a school-wide production. We even get a lot of props from the middle school teachers. So it's really exciting. So without further ado, I'm going to quickly have them introduce themselves, who they are, what grade they're in, and the part they play. Then they're going to do a little presentation for you.
I know you don't know me, so I'm Maya Cole. I'm a senior, and I play Patricia Martin, and I'm featured on ensemble.
I'm Lisa Notti. I'm a senior, and I'm the DJ at featured ensemble.
I'm Chris Noddy, senior, featured on ensemble.
I'm Victoria Brent. I'm a sophomore, and I'm in an ensemble.
I'm Vincent Priscilla. I'm a senior, and I play Seymour.
Feed me, Seymour. I'm hungry.
I'm Leila Parker. I'm in 11th grade, and I play Crystal.
I'm Jordan Rosenberg. I'm a junior, and I play Shafan.
I'm Julia Dennis. I'm a freshman, and I play Sherelle.
I'm Julia Mitchell. I'm in 10th grade, and I play Ronnet.
I'm Stephen Porlucas. I am a senior, and I'm one of the puppeteers for Audrey II.
I'm Faith Matheson. I'm a senior, and I'm as Bernstein in featured ensemble.
I'm Maddie Webb. I'm old woman in featured ensemble, and I'm a senior.
I'm Leila Cook. I'm a junior. I voice Mrs. Luks in Skid Row Ensemble.
I'm Ari Johnson. I'm a freshman, and I voice Audrey II.
And now we would like to present to you a little sneak peek of our production of Little Shop of Horrors. Five, six, seven, eight.
Little Shop, Little Shop of Horrors, Little Shop. Little Shop of Terrorists, Call the Cop. Little Shop of Horrors, No, oh, oh, we know.
Thank you.
They've been working really hard. The crew's at home doing homework. But we do have a nice crew. We have a big cast. We've gotten our numbers up to about 40 cast members and 30 crew members. And that is a number that we've been climbing back in the day. I think when Mrs. Katochi's kids were in the play, we had about 150 kids in the play. Pandemic has hit us hard, but we are back, baby! And we can't wait to go to Cappies. We're very excited. We hope to see you there. Let Dr. Graves' office know what ticket you'd like to receive. We'd love to get them to you ahead of time, because we are going to sell out. And we don't want you to wait on mine or anything like that. Thank you so much for your time and your support.
Thank you.
And now you're watching that song.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Scoot-a-doo. There's two other humongous puppets that eat people. So I want you to come and see them. What was that?
I had an eighth grader in my cherry the other day that looks like Elvis Presley, and I'm already hurting him for...
Yes, send them our way. Send them our way. Thank you.
Free job. Can I have approval for any other minutes, please? We didn't have second.
We got your back.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Yes? Abstentions? Citizens? Any citizens to be heard?
Hi. I'm Brian Dattavio. I am a high school counselor.
I'm Lisa Dolby. I'm the 18th and 21th transition teacher.
So I just wanted to take a few minutes. You may have heard that the highlight of my year last year was doing negotiations with you all. And then my year took a turn. I was diagnosed with cancer on Valentine's Day. And I was going through a lot last year. Chemo, radiation, many, many weeks. And I just wanted to let you all know the tremendous amount of support I have received from this school, from Dr. Gravesner, Dr. Fitzpatrick, from Fran, I came and looked at him, from Paul, from Sidoni last year, from Michelle this year, all my staff, the students. It really kept me going, and I can't really express enough. We talk about a Delsey family, and you all needed to hear what your administration does when you have a life emergency like that and the drama in that. It was just incredible, the amount of support. You know, my colleagues made me T-shirts. They walked in a walk for me in Philadelphia. They brought me food. The kids knew. They gave me a standing ovation during senior homeroom. Like, you just all need to know the type of atmosphere when you're going through that. And I really wanted to thank you all for your support as well.
So my husband, if you don't know, on August 6th was in a very severe accident at work, where he was... his person was hit by a car. And our life turns upside down, very similar to what Brian went through. And in a blink of an eye, things can change. And the same thing. And Brian held it together a little bit more than me, but, um... You don't know what a family is until you work with initiators like Pierre and Anthony and Fran, the coworkers, the students, you know. They supported us. Our good friends made shirts, but every person that could had a shirt. People were checking on me. It happened right before school. Up until the day of the in-service, I didn't know what was going to happen, and, you know, Pierre said, "Come in." And if you need to go to your room, take a break, you can. And I walked in my room, and my coworkers had come in and set it up for me. And my coworkers came to me and said, "My room's empty if you need to step out, or if you need me to cover your class so you can step out because you're having a moment," or whatever. And like Brian said, you don't know family until you have Delsey family. And Brian and I were talking too. I was correct. I thought he was county counselor. He's state counselor. I'm only Gloucester County. We got that. But as Gloucester County teacher of the year, it's been an honor, which that kind of coincided with this as well, so that's been kind of a weird thing. But I've gone to speak with teachers from every county in our state, and I just sit back and I listen to them talk about the huge lack of support that they have, to down to when they got announced. And I'm like, that would never happen in our school, ever. And so Brian and I said, "You guys probably hear people come here and say like, 'Hey, we always have this problem, this complaint,' and we wanted to come and tell you. Your administrators create this environment. Your teachers create this environment. Your students create this environment. And we thank you for your support." And by the way, here's my husband.
Yeah, I brought mine too to thank. It really meant a lot to us. It really meant a lot. So thank you.
Thank you.
That was lovely. Thank you so much.
Any more citizens?
I think we have a mission to the jury.
We're not going to get any better than that.
You can end the board meeting now.
Don't feel like you have to stay.
Any more citizens? Mr. Morelli, personnel.
I make a motion to approve the following non-teaching staff programs as listed.
We have a second on this motion. Any questions on this motion? Roll call vote. Mrs. Katochi?
Yes.
Miss Beck?
Do I go on this?
You should say.
That's a... say.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Hi. Mr. DeWitty?
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mrs. Gagio?
Yes.
Four votes yes.
I make a motion to approve the following retirements as listed.
Second. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
I make a motion to approve the following leaves of absence as listed.
Second. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
I make a motion to approve the following staff as school year two, two, two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. I approve usually approved grade as listed.
Second. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
I make a motion to approve the following two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three curriculum development assignments as listed.
Second. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
Make a motion to approve Tabitha McKenzie for a seventh-period stipend and $5,000 from two January twenty-two to January two, twenty twenty-three, through January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, per week.
Second. We have a second on this motion. Any questions on this motion? Roll call vote. Mrs. Katochi?
Yes.
Miss Beck?
I'm saying.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty?
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio?
Yeah.
Mrs. Gagio?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
Make a motion to approve the following two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three scheduled to be non-athletic positions as listed.
Second. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
Includes my report.
Anybody want to take a minute? Sure.
I make a motion to approve the board secretary report in accordance with the New Jersey State law for the month of December two thousand twenty-two. The board secretary certifies that no line item account has been overextended in violation of the New Jersey State laws, and insufficient funds are available to meet the district's financial obligations for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Second. We have a second on this motion. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
I make a motion to approve the treasury report as listed in New Jersey State law for the month of December two thousand twenty-two. The treasury report and secretary report are agreement for the month of December two thousand twenty-two.
Second. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
I make a motion to approve in accordance with New Jersey State law the certification of the board secretary that there are no changes in the distinct section amounts or revenue sources.
Second. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
I make a motion to approve the Board of Education certification pursuant to New Jersey State law. We certify that after review of the secretary's monthly financial report appropriations section, and upon consultation with the appropriate district officials, that to the best of our knowledge, new major accounts of funds have been overextended in violation of New Jersey State law, and that sufficient funds are available to meet district's financial obligation for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Second. We have a second on this motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
I make a motion to approve the report that transfers for December two thousand twenty-two.
Okay. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? Roll call vote. Mrs. Katochi?
Yes.
Miss Beck?
I'm saying.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty?
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio? Yes, Gagio?
Yes.
Chair votes yes.
I make a motion to approve the following bills as listed.
Second. We have a second. Any questions? Roll call vote. Mrs. Katochi?
Yes.
Miss Beck?
I'm saying.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty?
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio?
Say.
Mrs. Gagio?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion passed. Okay, DeWitty, you're all.
I make a motion to approve the following clinics and workshops as listed.
Second. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? Roll call vote. Mrs. Katochi?
Yes.
Miss Beck?
I'm saying.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty?
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mrs. Gagio?
Yes.
Chair of the House, yes. Motion passed.
I make a motion to approve the submission of the ESEA fiscal year 2023 amended application.
Second. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. I also, Mrs. Katochi?
I make a motion to approve on first reading the following bylaws as listed.
We have a second on this motion. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Thank you. Athletics.
I make a motion to approve the following athletic positions for the 2022, 2023 school year as listed.
Second. We have a second on this motion. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
I make a motion to approve the following facility request as listed.
Second. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
I make the motion to approve as the lowest responsible respondent Underwood Engineering Incorporated professional service contract for construction quality control and material testing during construction of the fieldhouse-sized toilet room in the amount of $25,770.
We have a second. Any questions on this motion? Roll call vote. Mrs. Katochi?
Yes.
Miss Beck?
I'm saying.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty?
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mrs. Gagio?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carried. Cafeteria.
I make a motion to approve the following cafeteria report for December 2022 as listed.
Second. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Transportation. Anybody want to take Mr. DiMaggio's?
Sure. So I make a motion to approve the following 2022, 2023 transportation jointures as listed.
Second. We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
Recommend the board approve the following special education tuition student placements as listed.
So moved. Okay, we have a second on this motion?
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote. Mrs. Katochi?
Yes.
Miss Beck?
I'm saying.
Mr. Morelli?
Yes.
Mr. DeWitty?
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mrs. Gagio?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Motion carried.
Recommend the board approve the following field trips in accordance with our fee schedule and educational significance as listed.
So moved.
Second.
We have a second. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
Recommend the board approve November 2022 high school and middle school hit report as presented last month.
So moved.
Second.
We have a second on this motion. Any questions on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
Recommend the board acknowledge the receipt of the December 2022 high school and middle school hit report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
We have a second on this motion. Anybody have a question on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
And the district reports are there for your approval.
Mrs. Kato, you're all.
Hi. So it seems like everyone's coming in here tonight and just praising Delsey, praising the Delsey family. And I have to say, I'm going to do the same thing. So I'm realizing that as the school year sort of progresses, and we're getting towards the, I would say, towards the end of it, I'm seeing a lot of just connection between everyone. I'm guessing it's because the Nazi season has ended. But the play, you just saw them come in here. They have their own play family. I go with spring sports. They have their own little families. And, you know, as far as I know, there haven't been any major fights or, you know, kids doing drugs in the bathroom. So that's always good. So I have to say, I think things have been going really well at Delsey, and I can't really see anything... As much as I would love to come in here and say, "We need to fix this right now." I don't really have anything to say right now, so that's a good sign. So I'm hoping that that stays. But that's all I have, and I just want to say, like, good job. Good job with what you guys did.
Thank you. Second, board member, Morelli? Any questions on the branches?
I was asked to do this, and I pulled together some information regarding some new legislation that's out there. Right now, they passed the new bill, Chapter 138. And Dr. Fitzpatrick and Dr. Graves probably is already going into New Jersey Learning Student Learning Standards in the area of information literacy. I'm not speaking on behalf of the board, just speaking independently now. It's a shame because it's just redundancy. There's things that are already being done in school. And it's unfortunate that I think you'll be seeing throughout the legislation, because you're all being re-elected next year. Every single one of them, new legislators, will be re-elected. So you'll see all kinds of bills and actions of this nature that is becoming, in my opinion, not in mine, but the board's, or anybody, that's redundancy. That, and I just read one this morning that's going to be dealing with crisis orientation, where there is a child at risk, which we're calling her last month. And it hired to develop another level of review. And the response from many people was saying, "Where are you doing this? Who's going to pay for another?" We're all budgeting situations right now. Who's going to pay for another crisis council, or something like this? So I wish some people would just sit back and just see what's already... And actually, find out what the schools, districts are already doing before you develop legislation. And someone may be good. I mean, someone may, I might criticize wrong. So just keep your eyes open to that, and truly just work that's already being done at many levels of this school district, not just in Delsey, but in all school districts. Just a heads up on, there's some bills that are in the Assembly right now that this is probably going to have some impact. And that's from Assemblyman Lambert in the area of expanding the scope of school district employees sick leave. That's going to have... I won't get into it, but there's a lot of different levels and tiers above, beyond the scope of negotiations. And that could create financial issues and approval processes within the confines of all school districts. Senator Ruiz, and she right now has two bills that are looking at the school lunch programs that are going to, could affect. And these are only bills in the Assembly that have been passed or approved here that are going to be requiring school districts to request the families apply for school lunch meals. So it used to be confidential about how the kids used to work, and, you know, no needless labeling. And now the districts are going to have to, if this goes through, actually go to parents and say, "You should apply for X," or "Apply for Y," or "Apply for Z," to help out. And also raise the nutritional standards for lunch and breakfast programs. So I'll keep my eyes and ears open to that. One that I... I have a pleasure to share. This is in the area of athletics. Senator Sarlow, who also sits on the NJISA Board of Directors, has brought forward, and in a cry, is his co-sponsor, permitting the Board of Education to bid non-resident students the cry and is co-sponsor permitting the board of education of non-resident students with participation in school sports or extracurricular activities. Okay, you know what that means? Open season. Open season, district to district, state to state. And what I've read is that they will give them one pass. So a student could transfer and it's supposed to be for the tuition rate of the school district. So you know there's approved tuition rates and there are tuition rates. So a student could leave New York City and come here and play basketball for the cost of, I'll just say $17,000 and spend four years here after that. Had no recruitment issues, no athletic issues at all. So I won't say recruitment's not happening already, but this is just going to open the door and stay tuned. Frank and, and it is, and there's a lot of fight in Sarlo is on the NJASA board and he's also a senator and it's almost a conflict of interest to be able to do it coming. There are my criticisms and my not the board of education's criticisms, so I don't give a distinct comment here, but just stay tuned that that's going to create, that Sarlo bill is going to create, if it goes through, major headaches for NJASA throughout the state.
Frank, is that a one-time transfer?
That's what they're saying. For the student. So the student could come here, but you could have 10 students do the same thing. Or 20 students or international students. So what are we doing? Building, teaching and education instruction or where that athletics?
Not that it doesn't happen now, but you're going to have kids that follow a coach to the school. You're going to wind up with a coach at a school and there's going to be, you know, he's going to have a starting five or a starting offense that's, that's all his kids that he coaches in the summer or all season or train.
And indirectly, you know, well, I'm speaking out loud, but your community parent, your parents and the community saying, well, my son or my daughter played, now they're being displaced by a tuition student from New York City. For what reason? So I mean, there's probably a thousand scenarios that could occur.
It also brings us back with issues too. If we can actually move their, their child from district to district to follow a coach or follow sport to those that can.
So not that I want to bring you forward, that's good news. But there are, there are some things in potentially in the works that could have impact that I think our administration, athletic directors and instructors, administration have to keep a close eye on. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Porelli. The old business and new business. Any citizens speak in? Then we have the executive. We have the executive. We want to take a
Motion to do it.
Motion, get one to executive. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Take a five-minute break and we'll go with the Closing the meeting.
Second.
Second. Any favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all. All right. Thank you.